Morning, I'm going to call the order this June seventeenth, two thousand twenty five, Commissioner's Special Meeting. We have any adjustments to the agenda?
I'm going to move to accept the agenda as presented, following additions, uh, following addition, uh, six C, approved to hire Sarah Barker Williams effective seven twelve twenty twenty five as Legal Secretary of one, it's step nine A. I'll second that.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Public comment, is there anybody this morning we should be making public comment?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Rebecca Long, I'm a resident of Rochester Island. I'm here today respectfully to request that Juneteenth, June nineteenth be recognized as an official observed holiday in Hancock County. Juneteenth commemorates the day in eighteen sixty five when enslaved individuals in Gauston, Texas were informed of their freedom. It represents true, the true end of slavery in the United States and has come to symbolize freedom, justice, and the enduring pursuit of equality for all Americans. Juneteenth is now a federally recognized holiday and is observed in many counties throughout our state and across the country. To my knowledge, however, Hancock County has not yet taken steps to formally observe it. I would like to inquire as to why that is the case. As our county grows in diversity, it is imperative that we also grow in cultural recognition and inclusivity. Acknowledging Juneteenth is not simply about symbolic observance, it's about demonstrating that we value the entirety of American history and the lived experiences of all citizens. I respectfully urge the commissioners to place this matter on an upcoming agenda for discussion and vote. It is my sincere hope that this decision is not being hindered by financial or administrative concerns as recognizing such a significant day in our shared history should not be reduced to a budgetary issue, et cetera. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Anybody else this morning? Hearing none, we'll move on to approval of the minutes.
I'm going to move to, uh, I'm going to move to approve the minutes of the June third, twenty twenty five, Commissioner's meeting. I'll second that.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Move on to the airport.
Good morning.
Good morning, Leroy.
Uh, I'd like to request the approval of the contract between, for the construction of the SRE building with, uh, Nickerson and O'Day.
Were they the only?
They was, they was the lowest, um, acceptable bidder.
Is that a buy America, buy build, is that?
Yes, it will be a buy Amer- buy and build America, yeah.
Okay. Gentlemen, you have the request, what's your pleasure?
Uh, move to approve the construction contract for snow removal equipment building and to reconstruct the airport services road slash taxi lane construction with Nickerson and O'Day for the amount of three million nine hundred and six thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars and seven cents and authorize the chair to sign on behalf of Hancock County.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And the next one is the approval of a land lease assignment, um, of parcel sixteen that, uh, DeVore and Alex, and I'm not even going to try to pronounce their last name. They're selling their hangar to Nate Holyoke Incorporated, so it's just a, a land lease transfer upon the closing, which is June thirtieth.
All right, I'm going to move to approve an exclusive, yeah.
Yeah.
To approve, I'm going to move the approval of the land lease agreement, uh, for the parcel P sixteen, lease dated March eighth, uh, twenty sixteen from Davor Slestik and Alex Slestik to, uh, Nate Holyoke Builders Inc. Effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, and authorize the chair to sign on behalf of Hancock County.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Leroy, before you go.
Yep.
We had a ream of information prepared for us. Contract listing, uh, I gotta suspect that's a lot of work for our staff, I'm just wondering, do we really want to see that?
It's just, I think they should just, I was thinking the same thing when I saw it, it's like, okay, if I want to do something on the county budget, it'd be printing some of the things that there's no way we're going to read through all that, to be honest, let's get real.
Maybe.
But I do think you should send it to us, uh, we should just do it as electronic form to us and then we officially can have the document and it's up to us to read through what we want.
Is it, is it the same amount of work or putting it all up as a technical process?
I mean, printing, printing the paperwork, whether there's one page or a hundred pages is, is the same every time, so. But wait, but if you want us to shorten that part and just.
If I may, just, yeah, so, I mean, the reality is though, the paper costs money and the ink costs money. I mean, we were actually at one point going to ask you whether, because we're in electronic age now, whether you even want us to give you the actual fiscal visors anymore. If, you know, even to that extent, how, how involved you want us to be, because, I mean, and it does take a little bit of time, obviously, to take those, put the holes in them, press, I mean, it's not, and it's mint amount of time, but if the reality is, well, all three of you are going to be using your computers to look at it anyway, then it's just an extra step for, for no reason.
I, I think like contract, I might think it's like the contracts that we get a lot of times, the large contracts. Those should just be sent to us electronically so that we can look through it, but.
Can you, you can have a sheet and tell us that it's available or something like that. But Michael, my problem is, is that I still have to use this because the time I'm on my laptop. Every time I get a timeout trying to chair, I gotta stop, log in again, and I, let's say give us four minutes or something? I can't, I can't keep up with it. So, I, I do need a minimum, I do need that because I can't use my laptop to.
Yeah, we don't mind, we would give you whatever you want. The contracts in themselves, yeah, this, that would take almost close to a hundred pages, if you have to give it a take, but it can save this time. And that's for three years, three hundred, so you're looking at a half a ream right there, yes.
Just turn it on, so, yeah, that's, yeah.
Uh, personally, I would think you'd be, look at the digital copy and have one copy if, if you want a paper. That's my opinion.
We don't have any timeout.
I mean, it's, it's facial.
I don't, I don't, I know. What did I say? All right. All right, thank you, Leroy, anything else this morning?
Uh, nope, that's, that should do it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning. Uh, first on the agenda is the, uh, yearly, uh, approval of the sheriff bonds. I have, uh, one for the Chief Deputy William Birch. I have another bond for Scott Kane, Sheriff Scott Kane, and another bond for the deputies.
All right.
And you should also have a copy in all of your, uh, books this morning.
I'm going to move to acknowledge the sufficiency and approve the sheriff's bond as requested by District Attorney.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Um, I would just need the signatures on, from all of you on every one of the bonds.
Yeah. It's on, it's all part of the sufficiency and approve Chief Deputy's bond as requested by District Attorney.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
I'm going to move to acknowledge the sufficiency and approve the deputy's bond as requested by District Attorney.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Second agenda item that I have is approval to hire Jayden Wallace effective June twenty eighth as our victim witness advocate as step eleven A, which is twenty-four, twenty-three, and she is from Bangor.
I'm going to approve the hiring of Jayden Wallace of Bangor for the position of victim witness advocate as step, uh, eleven A at the rate of twenty-four, twenty, twenty-four dollars and twenty-three cents effective June twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And finally, approval to hire Sarah Barker Williams effective July twelfth as step nine A, which is twenty-one eighty-three. Currently, she lives in Rochester, New York, but, um, they, her and her husband are moving here to Southwest Harbor over the Fourth of July weekend. Um, and he's going to be stationed in the Coast Guard here, so technically she will be living in Southwest Harbor.
I'm going to approve the hiring of Sarah Barker Williams of Rochester, New York for the position of Legal Secretary of one. Step nine A at a rate of twenty-one dollars and eighty-three cents effective June, July twelfth.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Gentlemen. We have before you the, uh, dark fiber issue, I guess, now I didn't realize and I apologize for not getting the gist of it, but uh, Michael has added language to the, that clearly states this won't be paid until twenty twenty-six. Now, the urgency before was not just because we were going to get our budget, they need to do some, uh, pre-work for construction, like railroad right of ways, things of that nature. And so that could take just six months to get that in place. Right, so, and, and they're going to want to go where we are and probably beyond at some point, so that's important. So that's why this, uh, contract is up for approval now, allows them to get busy on that work. And, uh, check split it up, uh, where Mr. Dupree has two forms and, uh, one lump payment, uh, one lump sum payment and monthly. And so that would be in your discretion, what you'd rather do for that, but it's going to be an item that we have to pledge a current issue and there's no savings coming along, so it's the same amount.
So we had a meeting together, it's determined that payment for that fiber purchase is not in contract. It's not, uh, three point seven million construction. We're going to have to find funds ourselves to pay for that. And I think I think really the only way to do it is especially now that we don't have to step in till twenty-six, it's to pay monthly payments, so it's on the first or whatever contracts. Call for starting in twenty-six, I did that in twenty-six IT, but.
Should that be in the IT or should it be in Hancock site, because I was told there's going to be a bunch of for Hancock site as well.
Because there's going to be two budgets, right?
Yeah, we're, we're going to develop, uh, operating budget for the Hancock site to include, uh, expenses and so forth that associate with that location, new department, but should this be an IT budget item or a Hancock site?
We talked about that quite before, Hancock site.
We are, yes.
What's, what's other department would you put this in?
You could put it in the IT department, like the IT budget. Or we could put it in the Hancock.
I suppose it's, it's either one of you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where does it come, which one?
What do you think? We talked this morning to, you know, it would be suggested to develop a budget for Hancock site separate, separate to, to private.
Right, yeah, I think Monica and I anticipated this today.
Yeah. So, knowing that, is it just like, what it's all just like data?
It is going to be four, forty-six hundred a month or whatever.
I mean, it's just, it's just like all of infrastructure needs, so. Say, put it in maintenance?
Yeah. Okay. So, is it something that's going to get, uh, contribute, is it going to get contributed from, uh, Andy's department?
Well, the dark fiber is going to be used in EOC building, right?
That part will be used both.
So, the question, you know, question game on this morning, is EOC in the E and the project, or is EOC the standard of solar rates?
Uh, I think that the operations and the infrastructure is, this is exclusive to Andy is EOC or, or EMA, but, uh, but I think the building maintenance and, and services to the building, like the electric bill and, and this bill, uh, uh, fuel, uh, for instance, would that be considered a monthly operating expense, entire site or exclusively for EMA? I think it's the entire site, thoughts, Michael?
So, I mean, it's assumed that obviously some of those operational things will be part of PMC, EOC and EMA. So the two really, I mean, he may add additional line, but I would assume they would still appear, that portion of it would still appear as part of EMA. Now, some of that's obviously contingent upon his grant funding and operational stuff, so some of those will have to work together to perhaps revise to see, we haven't really even gotten this far yet, but at some point, does, you know, do we expect a reimbursement from EMA to pay for a percentage of those costs that are shared? Not the ones that are obviously directly attributable to, you know, EMA and.
Well, listen, there's a benefit to having it because fifty percent of the budget, or five percent of the budget comes from the state, so.
So I would assume that what the intent would be is that those items that could qualify would appear in that EMA budget, but I don't know if we necessarily need to create two separate parts just for EOC. But obviously, you tell us what you want, we'll make it work, so.
I do see that being a, just pro.
I would, if he, if it's determined that Andy's use of that is forty-five percent or whatever of the cost that he would budget for forty-five percent,
or so, I'm just throwing that figure out there, for example, but, you know, things like waste removal, snow removal, there's lots of things that are going to been played out there. As monthly expenses and.
Well, I think, I think first of all, EOC probably then would be an EMA expenditure out there to some extent, whether you want to pick out pieces.
Well, we have our public side, our, our public side, our SEC backup and the IT backup, which would be wholly county.
Well, even, even our SEC backup is part of the EOC component, that's what makes it an EOC is the.
Yeah, see, these are the determinations that need to be made.
Well, purpose today, I think we can agree that, uh, budgeting for dark fiber for the site is going to come out of maintenance, so we'll prove their, their understanding today and at some point we'll talk about where this confusion budget.
Does Jeff want to come up with the electronic version of this or signing this one as fine?
Oh, we can sign this, I'll scan it and send it back, so.
All right, I'm going to move to approve the dark fiber contract for an IT backup that the Hancock County sign, authorize the chair to sign the contract on behalf of Hancock County.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Just a question of that, are we going to be signing the one with just the monthly payments or not the lump sum upfront?
Okay. And those monthly payments don't have to start until, until January.
Nine years are active or?
Or active, yeah, I mean, if we don't get the product or services, or we haven't accepted it, we don't have, we don't bring any money, we don't have a budget. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Do you have a contract for us to sign? Uh, chairs.
We have the, uh, must be one from. At least maybe.
I would tell me, that's our.
Okay.
I thought, I thought you wanted to. Yeah. Uh, no, just want to highlight, uh, two of our dispatchers who were awarded a penis award by Maniamus for their part in a cardiac event that resulted with patient being viable leaving hospital with no pillow attacks.
Obviously, SEC is pretty.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Personnel policy amendment. For signature this morning, that's just making background checks mandatory and also incorporating that standard hiring checklist. Are there any questions for me?
Is there a separate article in the contract for a selection process? You can use. This is the three contracts, is there a, is there a separate selection process in the three contracts?
I, I don't believe so, I can, I can look more into that.
Let us know because we're going to be negotiating one year, another couple of months, and we should begin language at the nearest.
I did reach out to some of the stewards to see if they were interested in talking about that. I didn't get any feedback as far as interest in taking part in the hiring process.
Well, if it's not addressed in the contract, it is applicable to them, so we need to know, you, you should know whether or not it is applicable. Gentlemen, what's your pleasure, Mr. Gads, who's your question, incorporate the language policy?
In favor, um, I'm going to move to approve the personnel policy amendments, section seven, uh, selection process of Hick County personnel policy is presented. I'll second that.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Thank you, Josh.
The updates are, there's an awful lot to report, other than we're still going through the process of, uh, working with the attorney um, and, uh, trying to compare, uh, which way the interest rates might go, whether we go through a taxable form of, uh, method for, for getting the the tan or whether we go through a tax exempt method. And, uh, I, I think we've decided in working with, with Greg at Drunken Woods, um, that, uh, there's not an awful lot of difference, it's, it's hard because we can't, it's kind of putting the cart before the horse, but we have to decide which way we're going to go before we develop the RFP, so, uh, I don't think that there's enough of a difference in the interest rates that, that we gave, we, uh, we got examples from, uh, Barbara at the Chi Savings Bank. So we, it looks like we'll probably end up going with the taxable method and it's a little bit simpler method of borrowing, you don't have to quite, you don't have to prove the need for funds so extensively with that method, so. We're still waiting to hear, I, I text, uh, emailed Greg yesterday and I haven't heard back from him. Uh, but, so we really don't have anything concrete to go with at this time, just wanted to kind of give you a little update. Anything more?
No, I mean, I think that's it, we, the reason it was on the agenda, one is just kind of have a brief overview, but two, if we were able to get anything actionable, we wanted to have the opportunity to do it today and not have it be held up two more weeks, but the attorney's still working on preparing.
Okay, we'll wait. Transfer of orders?
Yeah. We're going to, uh, move to approve revenue and reserve account transfers as approved at the June third, twenty twenty-five Commissioner's Regular Meeting, which is used for the UT Hancock County twenty twenty-five paving project.
This is just putting money in the right places because we've already, we've had to start paying even already in thirds, so, uh, this is putting money in the right slots.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You still?
You're about to come up here and talk about a dirty word.
Yeah, well, it's here, it's here and we've actually, behind the scenes, obviously departments are starting to work on this, as you've heard, so, um, that could bad, right, wrong, it's here, so. I put together the calendar, very similar to previous years, but there is one change based on prior conversations that kind of, in the end of the day, if you accept what's before you, will free us up with a little bit more time, so. In particular, June seventeenth, I'm here to, uh, obviously ask for approval of, of a budget calendar. July eighteenth, which would be about two weeks or so, give or take, a little bit sooner than what we normally ask all departments, or at least the departments that are going to be preparing below to make sure they have their budget information to me, and I can have my conversation with them before we send them out to you review and initial approvals. The, and then August sixth is basically the same date normally, all those are set in statute. But the workshops is where kind of I've made a change as well. The normal meeting schedule in July would be July first, which we're still planning on attending on doing unless you tell us otherwise, and July fifteenth. What I propose based on this calendar is to request that you, since it is a three meeting month, that you move the July fifteenth meeting to July twenty-second if possible. And then that will allow us to start to review with those meetings, uh, in July, the first reviews with commissioners. Where that comes in handy is if we do get bogged down because we do have two new, really, a couple different uh, departments or more, more expenditures and things this year you're going to have to look at. So where it comes in handy is if we get bogged down in that and something comes out where you need additional information, it would allow us to potentially move the items right now that we have to know, uh, the debt and overlay, Department twenty health insurance and Department thirty reserves, it would give us that opportunity to move those down to the sixteenth and have them finalized under a final budget you're going to set forward to, um, to the public hearing. Otherwise, we always get, we burn out of time before you want to send it, and it becomes a real difficult process to quickly have those materials out the door in enough time so people that are interested before the public hearing has a chance to look at it. But those last three departments, we need to know, all the other changes need to be made from all the other departments because those numbers are impacted by everything else that's done in your early approvals. So that's really the only real major change is that we moved up, I propose to move up the, the actual review a couple of weeks sooner, take advantage of that five, uh, or three meeting by week month. And basically that gives you a little bit more time around the public hearing and, and actual deliverance of the initial commissioner budget to the, uh, budget advisory committee, so.
Twenty-second would.
Yeah.
Any comments with the schedule? What's your pleasure?
Move to approve the twenty twenty-six budget calendar as presented.
I'll second.
Okay with that? Discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Michael, we, uh, call this morning from your office.
Uh, I mean, the, the only thing I guess I want to quickly provide and update on is that, uh, we are still getting inquiries into the status of Hancock County and the, the federal government executive order that was issued that listed us, and I've been working on that with our delegation. I also attended a, a NAGO National Association County Administrators webinar yesterday afternoon where they talked about that extensively and they've given basically the advice to counties that have worked within that position to go back and look at the statutes, the laws, and make sure that your policies and stuff are consistent, which is what I will obviously have a conversation with the chair about. But beyond that, there is apparently going to be, uh, like many others, another, or a lawsuit filed regarding this in terms of how that determination was made. Um, but beyond that, there is apparently going to be, like many others, another, or a lawsuit filed regarding this in terms of how that determination was made and. How this process evolved to the point that it was, but. There is a apparent perception again that the county somehow was obstructing. The immigration process, and, and so far we have no indication that that's the case, or have been provided with any indication exactly why we appeared on the list beyond. The list is outdated and old, and, and the regional board of jail administrators, he stated in the last meeting. Uh, he understood that they didn't have any issues with Hancock County, so. But I am getting, you know, still getting, I have one yesterday, like forwarded on. Uh, request, comment, or stories on this, and, and I'm just inquiring whether or not the county has an official position at this point. Whether you want me to express that position, or will we continue to do our research and find out before we actually provide a comment one way or the other. Which at this point, there's still some unknown, so I mean, I don't think that's unreasonable, but. Question is, is whether or not the commissioner's office wants to do that, or whether the sheriff should be commenting on that. I don't know, but. Anyway. That's where we're at.
I thought we discussed it pretty thoroughly.
I mean, we pretty much did, and I think the, the entity that requested it yesterday, even the phrasing of it, kind of made it clear that they didn't have an understanding of what happened with that. And what was going on with it.
My personal opinion is, taking the topic and trying to reduce it. But not to say it's very, can't be. Sheriff is following the law. You know, we don't have any authority over what the federal government is doing with the gas immigrants. I don't know what there is to discuss, I think, uh, think. They wanna, one of the one oppositionists got back and listened to the video on last meeting. I think that was thoroughly discussed. Gentlemen, what do you think?
Uh, we don't have any policy that's. In place that has gotten us in a position to be on a list. So to me, it's kind of like a moot point. And I don't foresee us. Developing any policy that would get us into any situation that wouldn't warrant any, uh, extra scrutiny per se. Yeah, I think we need to. Address it much further, as something actually comes of it. If. Some issue happens with the sheriff, jail, ice. We'll have to deal with that, but there's nothing. Tim?
I agree with John.
Michael, that's where we stand in this.
I appreciate it, thank you for making sure that helps with any future inquiries. We'll direct them back to those meetings as long as they can listen to the conversation just heard as well. Thank you.
Anything else, gentlemen? Gentlemen, any comments from commissioners, whether it gets to. Hearing on?
I'm gonna move to a juror.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.